Good evening. I would like to call to order the Albany City Council meeting for November 5th, 2018. Please join Vice Mayor Nason in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Councilmember Moss?
Here.
Councilmember Pilch?
Present.
Vice Mayor Nason?
Here.
Mayor McQuaid?
Here. Item 3-1, under ceremonial matters, I have a mayor's statement on the Tree of Life synagogue shooting. Please keep in mind this was written on October 28th, so the context is a little out of date. Once again, I'm extending the condolences of our city to a community devastated by violence. We grieve with our Jewish community and members of the Tree of Life synagogue, which suffered incomprehensible loss. The horrific shooting is one more incident in a week filled with terror, a week in which bombs were mailed to Americans who were targeted for their political ideology. In Kentucky, two African-Americans were murdered at a supermarket, a crime now being investigated as a possible hate crime. I want to recognize and appreciate the police officers in Pittsburgh who risked their lives to protect the members of the synagogue and hope for a full recovery for those who were injured. In addition, I am proud of our own Albany Police Department, the staff who have and continue to work with community groups, including our faith-based community, and are available on an ongoing basis to discuss any security concerns they may have. We must stand up and reject the hate that fills the hearts of some in our society. It is no longer sufficient to declare love is the answer, but rather we must stand up to those who wish to harm others simply for their religion, politics, sexual orientation, gender identity, race, or ability. The result of our failure to do this will be a community, and indeed, a country, we no longer recognize nor love. We have an opportunity to take action during the upcoming Bay Area Stand United Against Hate Week, November 11th through 18th, 2018. Albany is a leader in this movement. There are seven days of local civic action by people in every Bay Area community are designed to recognize and stop the hate and implicit biases that are a dangerous threat to the safety and civility of our communities. During Bay Area Stand United Against Hate Week, the City of Albany is partnering with the Albany Unified School District, UC Village, and the Albany Community Foundation to show "Near Normal Man," the story of Holocaust survivor Ben Stern. This powerful presentation will include a discussion led by his daughter Charlene Stern. Please join us on November 16th, beginning at 6:00 in the Village Community Center. This program is suitable for high school students and adults. Children's activities will be provided for younger children by the UC Village staff. We must courageously meet the challenge of denying hate the ability to take root in our community. Through the acceptance of our own personal responsibility to end this madness, we will bring honor to all those who have lost their lives. And now if I could have the AV apprentices meet me at the podium, please?
Good evening, staff, mayor, and council. Thank you for having me. I'm Brennan Brown from the Recreation and Community Services Department. I'd like to recognize our audiovisual apprentice program that took place between May through September. September is recreation and KALB's busiest time, with music in the park every Wednesday, as well as Albany Local Week, where this year we put on events like Food Truck Friday, As You Wish Block Movie Night, and our sixth Dinner with Albany. As these community events continue to grow and evolve every year, the help we need must be greater and more dynamic than the year before to make the events the successes that they are. This is our fifth year having the AV Apprentice Program, which teaches film, photography, and audio at live events while providing real work experience in these fields. They learn what goes into the planning, preparation, and presentation of large-scale events, as well as the work that goes into breaking down those events at the end of the night. I cannot say enough good things about this year's group. Rachel, Jonah, Portia, and Colin were so impressive from day one. We expected tasks and projects to be done at a high quality, and they did better. When we needed a certain amount of commitment from them, they showed more commitment. I had to elevate my expectations in order to meet at their level. They have all the incredible professionalism, talent, focus, self-reliance, problem-solving ability, and passion for their work. Not only that, but each were so fun to work with, and they all had a lot of fun working together. What they did was rarely glamorous work, but you would never know it based on how much fun they had while doing it. Based on what they brought each and every day to the program, I have a lot of faith in our future. So today, we're recognizing everything that they have contributed to our community and giving them a big thank you. So here they are, and we'd like to have mayor, let's give them a round of applause. Do you'd like to present them with their certificates?
General Rottenberg?
Thank you so much.
Rachel Schoenfeld?
Rachel Schoenfeld.
Colin O'Brien?
Colin O'Brien.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Portia Noble?
Thank you so much.
Portia Noble. Thank you so much, and thank you, council as well. We're gonna do a photo op, I hope that's okay.
Brennan, you can take your picture.
Okay.
We had no closed session this evening, so we move along to consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. By approval of the consent calendar, the staff recommendation will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the City Council. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member, a member of the audience wishes to request removal of items from the consent calendar. Does any council member wish to pull an item?
513.
Okay, I'd like to pull 513 also.
59 as well as 513.
Any others? Anyone from the audience wish to pull an item?
58.
58? Okay, let's start with 58, so I don't lose track of where we are. Julie, do you have a question you'd like to come up and ask?
I see that the money, I looked at the breakdown of how the CDBG funds are going to be used, and I saw that some of it was going to look like Berkeley Food and Housing. Is that correct? Yes? Looks like it's going to, okay. So about $40,000, I think, as I recall, and I would like to see a report from the, not from Berkeley Food and Housing, but from the people who are being served or not served by them. So I'm confused as to why, since the, as far as I know, the contract isn't renewed until next year. So I guess my question is, if you approve this, do the funds have to go to Berkeley Food and Housing, or could you change your mind? Is this locking it in? Because if it's locking in, I would like to really encourage you to have a subcommittee to go out and interview people who are being served or not served by Berkeley Food and Housing to get their stories, because it seems like so far, people have come to meetings and not really been listened to. You continue to renew the contract, and then, yeah, and then there are people that have a lot of objections to what's happening, and I feel like you're not listening to them. And so I would like you to go out and not just give the Berkeley Food and Housing a report, but also a report from the other side. So that's why I'm asking. So if it turns out that you could go ahead and vote on this, and you could change your mind later, then it's fine with me. But if it locks it in, then I would like to suggest that you not approve these and have a committee. And I have some suggested names for people that would be interested in being contacted. Thank you.
Thank you. Isabel, do you have a response on if we're locked into this?
Well, the council can always make amendments to the contract, to the CDBG contract, if you want to.
Okay, thank you. 59, Rochelle?
Yeah, I wanted to just make note of an issue here that we, it seems that at Memorial Park, we kind of do improvements one by one. This one was quite problematical when it happened, and I'm very concerned when any part of a public park is converted to a use that is not a use for the general public. I think that it is something that we probably should, as a council, discuss when a project of that kind comes forward. But more generally, I think that we should be thinking in terms of some kind of master plan for that particular area, for the, what is going to happen with the veterans building and the dog play area of the park and so forth. So I just wanted to raise the possibility that we might do a little bit more comprehensive planning and avoid facing this kind of situation in the future.
Okay, thank you. All right, 513?
Okay, thank you. Mark, get up here before I start hammering away. First off, I just want to say I'm grateful that this is proceeding forward, that something might eventually evolve into making a more usable surface down at Pier Street Park. But just a quick question. The study that they're gonna do will include a cost analysis. How hard and firm might that cost analysis be? Is this just gonna be comparative, this is twice as expensive as this, you know, that kind of thing, or will we get some possibly real numbers out of that?
So there's two purposes for the analysis. One is comparative, to look at both the turf option and the natural grass option, and it takes a long-term horizon, 20-year horizon, so that we really get the full cost. So some of the costs will have some pretty decent numbers, and those would be around the construction cost. We're not looking at things that are, we can get some pretty good order-of-magnitude numbers, some good budgetary numbers. It wouldn't be a detailed construction cost estimate, but it would be an order-of-magnitude estimate that we could use for budgeting purposes. But then that would get folded into the analysis, and then you would get into the 20-year lifecycle costs that might have some, you know, down the road, some less clarity in those numbers.
Okay, and the other was more thought. Grading is mentioned as something they're gonna be looking at, because that field is not particularly, it's flat, but it has a slope. We're also talking about doing potential, something on the other part of the Pier Street Park lot that might involve eventually some grading. I don't know if that could be looked at in terms of if soil is coming out of one place, it might be a cost savings to both projects to bring it up and put it elsewhere.
So in terms of, the one thing that we're looking at in incorporating is the use of the bike lane in there, and I think that's what you're referring to, is making sure that we program enough space to make sure we have the bike path that would go around the outside of the park. But in terms of, my sense is that the grading amount would be roughly equal, so in terms of making a decision about which option we want to go, the sort of the disposal of the soil probably wouldn't be that big of a factor. It's something we would have to look at as we get detailed and designed, but to distinguish between which option, probably not so much.
Right, but the thinking is, and maybe Michael could put this better, but, you know, the thinking is if you're gonna have to raise one end of that flat area, there may be soil coming out of just below there that could be doing that.
That's way better.
So that analysis would be definitely what could be used on-site within the same project, but looking to take it to an adjacent site probably would not. So the grading analysis would look at the balancing, the cut-and-fill, and ideally having a balanced site. But my sense is we're not gonna do a huge amount of grading.
All right. Well, sorry if I got too much into the weeds there, but the whole idea of this project is to get rid of the weeds, so.
Will the analysis look at irrigation for the plants on the slope, as well as the issue of the flat area? Because they look really severely stressed, if not mortally so. It's pretty bleak down there right now, and some irrigation might be something we should at least price out and have a sense of what our options are.
We could look at that, too.
I'd support that.
Speaking of irrigation, you know, I always think it's really important to look at all parts before we make a decision, but $22,000 for this study seems like a lot to me, and I'm just, I'm wondering if grass is really viable. I mean, do we really think we're gonna put in enough irrigation and be able to maintain it and be able to water in the coming years enough to keep grass going? And I'm just wondering if we should kind of just move into the turf phase and not spend $22,000 to study something that I'm not sure how viable it is. And my other question is, you know, they just, I guess last year upgraded the turf at Bates Field, and I'm sure they did a lot of study before they did that. Have we had any conversation with them about what they used, how they, what their analysis was, all of that?
No, we haven't connected with them on that. At this point, we've just engaged a consultant, gotten a proposal, and sort of lined out a comparative analysis. If we want to drop the comparative part and just get into what would be the cost for developing a turf field, so we get a ballpark cost of the, what we're in for, not only construction costs but long-term operating costs, we could pare down some of the cost of that analysis.
Pete and I, I just wanted to say Pete and I were very involved in that issue and could provide some of that information.
Yeah.
And I think that Rochelle brought up a really good point about irrigating other parts of the park, and perhaps putting our resources into that type of irrigation, which would, I think, be less water, because I'm hoping that we have drought-tolerant plants there. So in the long run, we wouldn't be spending as much, but we'd end up with a better product. We'd have irrigation where we really needed it, and we wouldn't be in that continual cycle of, oh, now it's really a drought, we gotta cut way back, and now all the grass dies. And, I mean, we've sort of seen that other places, and I just don't want to go down that road again if we can avoid it.
Question. The new turf at Bates Field, is the kind of long-asked turf with the shredded car tires in between?
No shredded tires. Car tires. It's cork.
It's now cork. And I would hope that whatever we're looking at is gonna be the...
We're not doing the crumb rubber. We haven't decided. We're not gonna get into the details of that, but we use some cork or coconut husk or some other materials.
In the Bay Area, there's a lot of old-used Birkenstocks you could recycle. But my question is, you still have to clean the artificial turf, because it does get dirty, right? So it's not totally water-free.
Right, so that's one of the important aspects of the analysis, is to really understand what the maintenance would be for turf, because, you know, anyone who's been down at the Bates Field, you know, they're very stringent about what you can bring onto the field, and in terms of food, dogs, and so forth, and it's very controlled. And this is somewhat of an uncontrolled environment, so it's understanding, you know, what the implications are of this use, and how that impacts maintenance costs and replacement cycles and so forth.
Is there any interest among other council members of not doing the study and moving into just researching turf?
Well, I would hope that perhaps we could sort of get beyond this idea that grass would make any kind of sense down there, because as the mayor's pointed out, you know, our experience at Ocean View, or Terrace Park, at Memorial Park, I mean, we have, we've done a lot of grass fields that just don't seem to hang in there for whatever reason. And particularly if this is gonna be kind of a playfield, like, say, Ocean View, there's no reason to think that this would hang in there any better. So it may be that we should be looking at what's probably initially a more expensive option, but one that could be year-round in terms of its usage.
How about, there must have been some fairly extensive study. Is there a printed report from the Tom Bates Field that we could just hand over, and then you could look at it and see if that gives you enough information, you can reduce your costs on this study?
So I think the things that are driving the cost in this analysis are the site-specific things, the things like drainage, grading, things that are really unique to the site that would not be applicable. I think you're right, the firm we're using has done lots of fields all over the place, and so they'll have good costs on the development of, you know, per square foot of turf and base and so forth. I think the important part, and this is where the money in the analysis is, is understanding the grading plan, understanding the drainage, and understanding some of these ancillary features that you're gonna need at this site.
To answer your question, mayor, I wouldn't be in favor of going, when you say turf, I assume you mean synthetic turf?
Not grass.
Okay, yeah. So I would not be in favor of going directly into that route. I'd rather see the study, because I don't know why the fields are bad. I'm guessing that it's lack of maintenance of the watering systems and lack of maintenance of the fields themselves, not necessarily that we can't have grass, can't keep grass. So I would like to see what it would cost to put in, to maintain a watering system and maintain a turf, you know, doing the air rating and all that, versus the costs of doing synthetic turf and then having to replace it, you know, however many years down the road it has to be replaced, et cetera, and the ongoing, and whatever ongoing maintenance of synthetic turf there is, too. So I'd rather see the options. I'm not a huge fan of using the fossil fuel material.
So in the study, can we get a, be sure that there's a maintenance plan as far as watering, mowing, all of that, days in it?
Yes, so the idea is to have a comparative analysis for maintenance costs for both options.
Okay. Any other comments on this? I'll accept a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Moss?
Yes.
Councilmember Pilch?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nason?
Yes.
Mayor McQuaid?
Yes, and the motion carries. The good of the city. The good of the city is a time for persons desiring to address the City Council on an item that is not on the agenda. Please note, city policy limits each speaker to three minutes. The Brown Act limits the council's ability to take and/or discuss items that are not on the agenda. Therefore, such items are normally referred to staff for comment or for future agenda. Do you have comment cards? Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Okay, if you could, Julie, go ahead, and you can be ready. Come on up, you can be after her, and if, when you're done, if you could fill out a comment card, please.
Actually, we have a different moment spot here.
Oh, it's okay. Is there anyone else? Okay. All right. Go ahead.
All right, I have two comments, and they're related. The first one is, I brought this up several months ago. At the beginning of the City Council statement, you have about diverse community members, regardless of where they're from, who they love, how they worship, et cetera, and I encourage you to add their housing status and their economic status, and I'm still encouraging you to do that. And then the second thing I wanted to mention is that there's something called the Native Arts and Cultures Foundation, which is involved in the United States Department of Arts and Culture, and they have a booklet that's called Honored Native Land, A Guide and Call to Acknowledgement. And it's encouraging native peoples and non-native allies to share and commit to the practice of honor the land. And this came up for me, because I've done presentations in Canada, and I listen to presentations in Canada, and I don't know if you've ever been to Canada and listened to a presentation, but all of them, as far as I know, or all the ones I've been to, they start out by acknowledging that the land that they're on is native land, and they name the name of the people, the indigenous people. And I would like to, and so this is a group that is trying to get the US to do that, and they have a guide, and I would like to encourage the council to acknowledge that this is aloney land at the beginning of each of your meetings. And I can send everybody a link to this website if you'd be interested in seeing it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kirk Schumacher. I attended last week the first meeting for the public regarding the rent review program that Albany has recently initiated. I have to say that it was a pretty disappointing meeting. One representative from Albany seemed to have no idea how many rental units there are in the city. The other representative from Albany had no idea whether there was a budget for this program, and the representative from the organization that's gonna be doing the conciliation and mediation seemed to have no idea whether they had ever done any work related to residential rental activities in the City of Albany. But they have two more meetings coming up, and I guess maybe they can do better for those. In any case, I was wondering whether we have access to the contract that we have with the mediation and conciliation organization, and whether there's a budget for the rent review program, and how the revenues and expenses for that program are anticipated to go.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, Andrew Sullivan, 511 Carmel. I just wanted to talk about an experience I've had over the past few years with the Albany Police Department, and multiple experiences with them, both having had my house robbed a number of times, and my car broken into 12 times now, and being pulled over by the Albany Police multiple times in the city and have them arrive at my house due to, you know, parties and things like that. I've been kind of shocked by the aggressive behavior of young officers, and I think it's largely tied to a real disconnect with the understanding of community policing, the type of community that we actually live in here, which is tied to the vests they wear, the guns they wear, the cars they drive, that further detaches them from people. I come from a long line of police officers in San Francisco that did really, you know, powerful community policing, so I have an understanding of what that looks like when it's done really well, and I don't see it being done very well here. When I engaged with the Police Department, I was further struck by the lack of real accountability and oversight of our Police Department. I really can't understand who looks at the department's behavior in detail and holds them accountable for their behavior. I was directed to the city manager, I believe, Nicole or something like that, and worked with her on a couple of situations, encounters that I'd had with the police. They were all given lip service. The chief of police at that time, Mike, you know, would say things, you know, in quotes like, "Yeah, the officer might get in trouble if you pursue this route, but the best solution would be to avoid filing official complaints and just talk to him personally." And they just seem to be a really profound disconnect between their real roles and their priorities in this community, and the level of, I think, understanding maybe that the City Council has, is a little bit of a feel-good, I think, relationship that, in my experience, that the council members have had with the Police Department. So I would like to encourage you to have, play a more active role in looking at the role that our Police Department plays in our community, whether they should be on electric bikes instead of big armored cars driving through the city, things like that, that really put them in a more positive and interactive role, particularly with our kids. As a father, it was really striking for me to see how high school kids today have no faith in the police. When I've encouraged them to go to the police on various encounters, their response would be, "Why would we do that?" And when they did that, that experience and perspective was reinforced by the behavior of the Police Department. So that's my comment, and I would really, I know I've talked to you about this, Nick, and it's a deep concern of mine, because I think there's a breach in general in this country, and it's definitely here as well.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Councilmember reports on meetings attended, announcements of future meetings. Michael?
On the 24th... On the 24th, I attended the Waste Management, the County Waste Management Authority. There was a discussion on the Energy Council, which is part of that authority, and what they're going to do in the, what their priorities will be in the next few years, given the, that East Bay Community Energy is now online and just how they're going to work with them. I also attended the Alameda County Transportation Commission meeting on the, I guess, the 25th, and that, I think Nicole had sent out one of the agenda items on that, which was a study that they presented to us on congestion management. It turned out, it ended up being quite an interesting discussion about all these different things that the Transportation Commission works on, but how in many ways they sort of counteract each other. We promote goods movement, and the justification is that it's an economic driver and it creates jobs. Unfortunately, most of the jobs it creates are jobs that don't pay enough for the people that do them to actually live in Oakland and around the port where all this stuff is happening. Consequently, they're, those people are having to move out to Modesto and Tracy and are commuting in, creating other congestion issues. So it, you know, I don't want to get into it too long tonight, but it set off a very interesting discussion. On October 16th and 19th in Oakland, I attended the Verge 18 meeting, which was a conference given by the Ellen MacArthur Foundation to talk about the circular economy. Fascinating stuff, and I'll leave it at that.
Nick?
Sure, so I attended two meetings, I think the EBC had their meeting, their October meeting, and we discussed the PCIA quite a bit, and I had some good discussions with, yes?
Could you, for our audience, explain ECBC and PICA?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. East Bay Community Energy is our new energy provider we're defaulted into unless you opt out of it, and I'm the Albany's representative on the board, and we have our monthly meetings and the next month, or this month, actually, it's November now, those who have not opted out will be seeing EBC on their, on their Pacific Gas and Electric Bills, their PG&E Bills, as their, as their new provider. So at the board meeting, we discussed the power charge indifference adjustment, which is the PCIA, which is something that PG&E gets to charge us new community choice aggregators like EBC, because they've bought long-term energy contracts and they can't get out of them, whereas EBC is a new entity and we can buy new contracts and presumably get better rates than they can. So PG&E, the CPUC, California Public Utilities Commission, gets to set the PCIA, and they recently set one that's not that favorable to organizations such as EBC. And I had some really good discussions with Dan Lieberman of EBC about this. Apparently, the PCIA has no sunset date, so even though PG&E must have fixed term, even though they might have long-term contracts, they must be fixed term, they can't be infinite, and yet there's no plans to phase out the PCIA at any point. Anyway, I urge all of my council members to get more schooled in this matter because I think we might want to learn more about what we can, our ability to influence the CPUC and other entities that, that set all these rules and, you know, speak up for our own rights in these matters. So we talked a lot about that and we had a salary, I think we had a discussion, a personnel discussion in closed session, and I think that was the meat of the matter, except for the rolling out of the residential accounts, which will happen this month. And then I got to attend the dinner honoring the volunteers, the volunteer celebration on Thursday, the 18th, and I think many, or if not all of us were there, and I think that's it.
There was another appreciation event, which most or all of us were at, which was the Citizen of the Year.
I was able to do a flyby, yes.
Dinner, yeah, that was terrific. And let's see, meeting Mayor McQuaid and I met with the East Bay Regional Park District about their plans for signage at the burrowing owl habitat and what that should look like.
And I attended Coffee with the Cops on Solano during the Halloween event on Solano, with thousands and thousands of kids. I went to two meetings preparing for United Against Hate Week, attended the Everyone Home Leadership Board and Membership Meeting. Councilmember Barnes and I went to, oh, you didn't go, I'm sorry, the East Bay Division League of California Cities Meeting. And I also had the privilege of meeting with Assemblymember Tony Thurman and various Bay Area faith leaders on ways to come together and combat the hate and violence that's plaguing our society. And Assemblymember Thurman called that meeting, you know, after this shooting in Pittsburgh, and so it was put together really quickly and we've made some good progress and we'll be reporting back soon, I hope. City Manager Report?
I just want to note that I attended that league meeting as well. Thank you for reminding me, and very informative meeting. I don't know if they do that every election cycle, but they talked a lot about the voting systems and election systems, and it's very informative. Anyway, onward.
Following up on that. Oh, excuse me. Our police department and our Neighborhood Services Manager are working with faith-based organizations within our community to help them be aware of safety concerns in a friendly, gentle way, just to help with awareness on those matters. So we will be reaching out to all of those organizations. The rent review ordinance is effective as of November 2nd, and we have two more workshops scheduled to help with the information as we implement this new program. We also have assistance days for those who may need sandbags if and when winter comes. They will be Saturdays, December 1st, January 5th, and February 9th, 10 to 1 at Ocean View Park parking lot. Also, if you're unable to physically get to Ocean View Park, you can certainly call our Neighborhood Services Program and we can deliver sandbags. We also have a CERT community meeting, a emergency preparedness meeting, which will be Tuesday, November 27th, at 7:00 PM at our Emergency Operations Center, which, for some of you who may not know, it's in between our police and fire buildings in the corner of the lot here. We will have a guest speaker, Keith Knudsen, who will be speaking on earthquakes and earthquake hazards to Albany and surrounding areas. We are also conducting a new climate action plan to adapt to our current environment, and we received 344 responses to a planning survey completed by the community to help inform that process. The results will be presented to our Sustainability Committee at their next meeting, and a community workshop will be held in early 2019. Our sidewalk repair program is clearly underway. I hope you've all seen the sidewalk rehab signs that we have planted, posted next to each of the sidewalk repairs. We're in our second phase of this repair project and that work is already over halfway complete. We have a great contractor onboard. We are also repairing sewers, and the current project is about 50% complete. Again, thank you to the residents in those blocks who have been impacted by this, although it appears that we have another great contractor as they receive their third plate of cookies from the neighbors. So that's always a wonderful thing to hear. And we're also doing some planning for Albany Hill access improvements. This Thursday, the final design for the access improvement project will be presented to Parks and Rec, and then it will follow up to city council. Almost done. And tomorrow is Election Day. So we have some information on the screen here as we watch results come in. Again, the polls are open from 7:00 to 8:00 PM, and you can go to Alameda County Register Voters Office, which is acvote.org, to obtain election information as it's posted by the county. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to once again mention United Against Hate Week. Albany is hosting two events. It's next week, November 11th through the 18th. The Albany Library is showing Not in Our Town: Northern California When Hate Happens Here, a film which takes a regional look at five Northern California communities dealing with deadly hate violence over a five-year period. Together, the stories reveal that whether the motivation is racism, antisemitism, or crimes motivated by gender or sexual orientation, hate is the same. This film will be shown on Sunday, November 11th, at 2:00 at the Albany Library. And also on Sunday, from I think 1:00 to 4:00 in Berkeley at the Civic Center Park, there will be a kickoff for the week with some amazing speakers and music and art. And so if you're not able to go to the library and you want to go to Berkeley, that's happening. And then on Friday, November 16th, at the Village Community Center, as I mentioned earlier, we're presenting Near Normal Man, which is the story of Ben Stern, who's a Holocaust survivor. And that'll begin at 6:00 with pizza and it'll go until 7:30. Thank you. Okay, number 8-1, Sift the Sand, a presentation by Albany Landfill Dog Owners Group. Okay, I will meet you there for invitation.
I'm actually, I've got PowerPoint.
Okay, go ahead, and at the end I'll give you your certificate.
Okay. I like your PowerPoint. So first, thank you very much for, there, thank you very much for allowing us to present on Sift the Sand. Albany Landfill Dog Owners Group did a very large beach microplastics cleanup last year. It was the first big beach microplastics cleanup in the Bay Area, and I just wanted to tell you about it because it's going to be very relevant to our beach going forward. Just so you know, Albany Landfill Dog Owners Group, I'm going to call us AllDog from here on, has been involved doing beach cleanups for about five or six years. We're a California Coastal Commission adopter of Albany Beach, and our commitment is three big beach cleanups a year. We stagger them so that, we clean up the beach in February, March, the Earth Day is April, in July we clean up the beach, in September the coastal cleanup, and in November we clean the beach again. So that we know that there are at least five big cleanups during the year. And we have a lot of good participation. I believe those are Albany middle school kids. Cal State East Bay has been a great participant, the Cub Scouts, that's our park supervisor, Scott Poseen in the big truck. It's, it's been really good, it's been very effective. We've cleaned up lots of stuff that looks like that. What we started to realize, though, is we're not getting really little things. You can't get the things that you can't really see on the beach. And so we started to wonder how to do that. This is a palette knife and a penny, and what you can see is, you're never going to be on the beach and pick up those little tiny things that stand out that are actually plastics, they shouldn't be there, they continue to degrade, they're really not good for the environment, but how are you going to find them on the beach? So the solution came when Vice Mayor Nason actually got in touch with a group called Sea Turtles Forever in Oregon. They've developed this high-tech screen, it just looks like a screen, but it's actually a very special German mesh with a metallic coating. As you use it, this is obviously Mayor McQuaid and Albany resident Vafa Sadi, who lives on Pierce Street, demoing the technique at the coastal cleanup last year. As you use the screen, it's very clever, it gathers all the really nasty little stuff, but it also develops an electrostatic charge. So things like that polystyrene, the piece of styrofoam that's clinging to the screen there, you can actually collect it, you can roll the screen up and you can dump all that stuff. Also, you can collect little things like that nurdle that you see. Nurdles are the raw material from which plastic things are made. So you dump a bunch of nurdles in a machine and it spits out a toothbrush. There are literally millions of nurdles in the sand all around the Bay Area. More about that in a moment. The East Bay Regional Park District told us, because we're so involved in the beach cleanups, about a Alameda Countywide Clean Water Program grant, and we applied for it and got it, and we bought a lot more screens. And we also managed to fly Mark Ward, who invented the screens, down last October 7th to supervise our cleanup and teach everybody how to use the technology. And we got lots of other help. I want to thank the Albany Community Foundation for pizzas, Trader Joe's for refreshments, The Watershed Project, we have a representative here today, for equipment and support, Sea Turtles Forever, obviously, and I also added St. Mary's College High School because those kids turned out about 30 or 40 volunteers. It was just awesome. On the day of the cleanup, we actually had 115 people. They worked in two shifts, six hours total, some people actually worked the whole six hours, and everybody seemed to have a really great time. These are Albany, Albany middle school kids. You can see in the foreground of the photo how clean and gorgeous the sand is after sifting. And this is, this is our trophy photo. You know how people have the photos with the big buffaloes and the rifles? Well, this is our photo with what we bagged. This is 2,440 pounds of debris that we took off the beach that day in six hours with just 115 people, who all had a good time. That's Mark Ward on the, in the blue shirt on the truck, and that's our park supervisor, Scott Poseen on the right. To give you an idea, I mean, you might think, okay, well, you probably just took away a lot of debris that's not really relevant. This three-quarters of a bucket of sand was gathered at Crab Cove about two months ago by Eileen Cohen and I. There are a lot of people in this room, by the way, who've worked on all of these cleanups. Thank you very much. We took that three-quarters of a bucket home and sifted out every piece of plastic we could recognize. Now, the really tiny plastics that are white and black, we had to toss because I don't have the technology to tell what's plastic and what's not. Anything that's not a color found in nature, I put on that plate. And the closer you look, the worse it is. This is from one square meter, six inches deep of sand, three-quarters of a bucket. And that's the way Albany Beach is or was too, and that's how all of the Bay Area is. I mean, it's a system. We really need to be working hard on this. There's also other stuff that's not even, I didn't even gather there. In the top-left corner, let me particularly draw your attention to it. That's what happens to styrofoam when it starts to really degrade and break down. It looks organic, and it gets nastier and crumblier, and there's no way you can clean it off the beach without a technology like the static charge filtration screens. Does anybody know what these are?
That's cigarette butts.
Yep, cigarette butts. Once the wrapper comes off, they look like little bits of wood, but the nicotine is still in them and they're still leaching into the environment. And then this is from one square meter of beach, the day before our Albany Beach cleanup. We went one square meter, eight inches down, 764 nurdles. If you extrapolate to the entire beach, we took probably 500,000 nurdles off Albany Beach. And it's critically important, not just because birds and fish eat the stuff, but because the nurdles, off gas on hot days, they continue to leach environments and chemicals into the environment, and they particularly soak up PCBs. And some of you may know that San Francisco Bay is particularly high in PCBs. So this is nasty stuff and we just have to keep working on it. The good news, this is, this is what we all think of as a beach, it's not too bad, right? There are a few little, there are a few bits of plastic, not so bad. We've gotten used to it. This is what Albany Beach looked like after we sifted it. It's almost liquid, it's so clean. It's a really gorgeous experience, it becomes very fine, and five minutes later, we had this. Kids doing sand angels in the sand, it was really, it was really fun to watch. So the beach is going to continue to need that, plastic keeps washing in. The park district has told me that the, what they call the native sand, the sand that was on the beach before the work, is showing lots of microplastics. We need to do another cleanup. The new sand they're bringing in is a slightly different sand, it's coarser, and it's supposedly pristine, but there is actually no source for pristine sand, so we're going to have to clean that too. And in thanking people, thank you for letting me do the presentation, but I just want to make sure... make sure, because my mother would be proud, to thank everybody who is really involved. Everyone in this room who's involved with AllDog, thank you so much. People who volunteered on our cleanup since the beginning, and who were there sifting and cleaning the beach. Mina DeAngelis actually cleans the beach three times a week on his own, and has for years, so, Mina, thank you so much. And I want to thank the City of Albany, friends of Albany Parks, because you've always carried a notice in your bulletin about the beach cleanups, and I really appreciate that. And then, of course, our very collaborative recreational park users, the windsurfers and kiteboarders who are also here. And just, hey, it's a good time, thank you so much. I'm going to play a little video, which captures that actual day. You'll see how people sifted. It'll only be about two minutes, and then I'll be happy to take any questions. She's going to play the video.
The bay that we all enjoy, it's a bay that we all love, and it's a bay that we all need to contribute to make sure that it's sustainable, that it's clean, and that it can support the ecological life systems that exist in the bay.
Albany Beach is a site that we like to call a marine plastic trap.
We're sifting for tiny bits of plastic, little microplastics that have broken down from larger pieces of plastic, and we have plenty of volunteers who are sifting the sand with these specially-made screens.
It was like a nice, nice way to clean the beach, take care of the environment.
Of course, we need to stop the inflow of plastic to our marine systems, but we have a system that works to remove the microplastics from beaches.
It's been very enjoyable, and like, very meditative, because the work that we're doing, it's, you don't really have to think about it too much.
Questions? We don't have, we don't have burning questions?
I have a question. Driftwood, how do you keep driftwood from getting caught in the screen devices?
The really big pieces, we toss aside, and we just leave. The small pieces apparently are impregnated with chemicals from the plastics around them, and we just take them away. But, but small pieces, because we don't want to tear the screen.
Thank you.
Do you have a sense if, if most of this plastic is, plastic people are just leaving on the beach, or is it most of it coming in with the tide, and just, it's a never-ending process that this is going to keep?
I don't think people are leaving plastic on the beach. I think some of the plastic has been there 40, 50 years. In the nurdles that we collected, you can tell somewhat from the discoloration of nurdles how old they are, and many of them were very old. They'd been out there on the beach for a long time. We also do get things washing in, bottle caps and plastic things like that. I think it, the plastic goes down quite deep.
I'd heard recently that all sea salt now has microplastics in it, so there's no pure salt.
Well, one of, yeah, one of the audience members asked me if I was going to mention that there was a recent worldwide study of human excrement, and it all has plastic in it, too. Yeah.
Okay. The line in the graduate was correct.
Exactly.
Plastic.
Plastics, exactly.
Question, do we have time for more questions?
Yeah.
So how many, you went down on Albany Beach, you went down eight inches, is that correct, or six inches?
For the, well, we went down until we hit wet sand. It, so, on the day of the cleanup, you mean?
Uh huh.
So it depended where we were. Some places, the sand was wet down three inches, and some it was down wet after 10. You can't sift wet sand, so you can only take what's dry. So we, we tried to work in at the lowest tide we could have, and some sand we even threw onto tarps and let it dry a bit, and then sifted it, but that's obviously kind of laborious.
And, so, I guess I'm trying to get a sense for, how many square yards, do you have a sense for how many square yards you did, and how many person-hours were involved?
I don't, Mark Ward actually did that calculation, and I just, you know, just took his word for it, that we had 500,000 nurdles. I don't, I don't know.
No, nurdles aren't, they're not the raw material, they're pieces of plastic, like old toothbrushes, that get kind of ground apart in the way that sea glass gets ground apart.
No, I don't think so. They're, they're little pellets, they're very round pellets, they're, they're very uniform.
Where do they come from?
They come in big bags from China.
So that's actually relatively new plastic, that just is washed overboard on ships?
I think we've been using it for a long time. There's a, there are a couple of companies in Hayward, apparently, that are plastics manufacturers who don't have good control of their nurdles, so they open up these very large bags, and they spill across the floor, and then eventually, they're washed into the bay. So that's one source, but I think that's been going on for a long time.
Hmm, okay.
Well, we do have a certificate of recognition. The Albany City Council commends Albany Landfill Dog Owners Group in recognition of its volunteer stewardship of the environment, including organizing Albany Beach as a grantee of the Alameda Countywide Clean Water Program, the East Bay's first large-scale beach microplastics cleanup, and removing more than 8,000 pounds of trash since 2013, as a California Coastal Commission adopter of Albany Beach. And thank you all very much. Thank you. And with that, we are on item 11-1, Resolution Number 2018-129, granting approval of an encroachment permit to allow a retaining wall in the public right-of-way at 958 Nielsen. And I believe we have two council members who need to recuse themselves, so we will see you guys in a few weeks, I guess.
Can I do?
Fairly vote often. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council members. The action before you this evening is to provide direction to staff regarding an encroachment permit application that's been submitted to allow legalization of a retaining wall in the public right-of-way at 958 Nielsen. Before I get into the details of that, I understand, based on some questions that we've received, that the council may want to discuss whether you wish to refer this matter to planning and zoning, in lieu of getting into a detailed discussion this evening. And so I was going to just pause right here to see if that's something you, if you wish to hear a full staff report, or you wanted to discuss that right now.
I would like to discuss sending it to planning and zoning at this time.
Yeah, me too. And that being the only action, then, we take, that's what you're suggesting?
Yes. Well, tabling it and sending it to planning and zoning.
One other possibility is that, since there are members of the public here who wanted to speak, we could allow them to speak, and planning and zoning could then review the videotape of their testimony.
I think that's, that'd be courteous to the people who are here this evening.
That was by intent.
Okay. Yeah, and I support referring it back to planning and zoning, but I do have, I would like to hear from the public, of course, and I do have some questions of my own as well.
So with that, can I open it to the public?
Hey, I have two concerns. One is, we do need to let the public know about our rules about the Brown Act, and us not being able to address items not on the agenda for any members of the public who are new to this.
This is on the agenda. This is the agenda item. We're allowing-
Addressing items not on the agenda, sorry. But also, do you, just for the sake of avoiding confusion, do you want us to participate at all, ask questions at this point, or are we just going to turn it over whole hog, as it were, to planning and zoning?
It's up to council members. It's up to you. There's, if you have some particular direction you want to give to the commission to take into consideration, that you think is important, this would be the time to communicate that. On the other hand, if you want to leave them a blank slate, it might be better to wait till the policy recommendations that they may develop come back to you.
Yeah. I guess I have a preference for the blank slate, myself.
Well, I think there's, there's two separate items here, I think, that I would like to see addressed. One is this particular issue, which I would like to send to planning and zoning, I think they're, they have much more expertise in this than we do. And the other thing is policy going forward, and probably a review of what we've done in the past, and how to make everything come together nicely. I think that could be my recommendation, that go on their work plan in the, for the next years. So I want to kind of keep those two items separate, though, because I don't want just to say going forward, we'll have X policy, and then put this into something that doesn't exist now. I think this needs to be dealt with under whatever rules we have right now, and not change it on anybody.
Correct. That, for an existing application, irrespective of what it is, the rules that apply are at the day that that application's submitted to.
Right. So I want to make sure they don't get, you know, mixed up together. Does that make sense?
Yeah. It does.
Okay. So having said those two things, could we open it now to the public? And certainly, the agenda item is this permit, so you certainly are able to speak to this, this item.
And I believe the property owner is here to, to address the council in particular, if you wish.
Okay.
No, just the property owner.
Okay. Come on up.
Ma'am, Anton Bonmondes. I am the owner of 958 Nielsen Street with my girlfriend, wife, Jen. We built a retaining wall, it's below four feet, which I believe is what the city allows. Didn't know that it was in, encroaching into the public right-of-way. I did get this sheet from the city saying about the street widths and the roadway, and I know on the report, it says 14 feet, but then it says from Sonoma, we're from, between Sonoma and Marin, it says the public walkway is actually nine feet wide, and my wall is built from the curbside nine foot six. I'm not sure if that makes a difference. It's not, we don't have a backyard, and so our front yard is our only kind of outside space. Once we found out it was an issue with the city, we, we talked to them, and we thought we had done everything properly, weren't trying to do anything under the radar or out of, you know, whack. The issue came up, because we do have a neighbor, this gentleman, Tony, here, and he's kind of been problematic, he's wanted to use our garbage cans.
I need, I need you to speak to, to the agenda item, not to difficulties in the neighborhood.
Oh, yeah, there's this, but I, okay, so I didn't realize we were doing anything wrong, and we've thought we've crossed every T, and we're upfront with the city of what we're doing, after we found out that we needed to. And if you guys have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So as shown in the diagram, there are posts, wooden posts and beams that connect between the posts, is that correct?
Yeah, there's a railing, so I have a, stuck a wall that's 45 inches tall, then I have a wood structure that I want to put vines on.
And so there's no intention to close in, is the intention to close in that entire area with vines?
No, just kind of for looks, I don't, I think it's some of the, for aesthetics, kind of a climbing vine. I don't know, I don't really see us kind of enclosing the front yard in that way.
So you see the vines turning around the posts and the beams, but not forming a curtain?
Not, not so far. I don't, I don't, I haven't really thought that far ahead of it, it's just actually one, two-by-four, and a couple four-by-four posts, not beams. But no, I, I'm not sure if it's going to be a curtain of vines.
Okay, thanks. That's it.
Are there other members of the public that wish to speak? I'm sorry, are you, are you finished?
Yeah, I mean, no questions, yeah.
Any other members of the public that wish to speak? Okay, okay, come on up.
Good evening, my name's William Daran, I live at 953 Nielsen Street, and I know this has been going on for a while, since this project started. I'm kind of curious, Mr. Barnes was over there looking at this site, taking photographs, and pretty much, my impression was, he was sort of on the side of the gentleman in the back there, who's sort of raising these issues. I'm kind of surprised he has no questions for this person, either. But I, I understand his yard is really small, and I think it actually shows some curb appeal. Before, it was, you know, kind of a nondescript front yard, you know, and he wanted to have some enclosed area for his family, which I don't think is a problem. So, anyway, I mean, I still kind of wonder why Mr. Barnes was there. I don't know if that's part of the official business of the city council, to be out there without. My, my problem with that was, he didn't have this gentleman there to give his side of the story.
I, I've never met this man.
Yeah, so, I don't know if that's part of his job to do that, his job description, I'm just curious.
I think when council has, when we have things on the agenda, we often go and look at the property and see what it is.
Well, this wasn't on the agenda yet. This is before all this. I think he was doing it on his own time, but, you know, I mean, if anybody-
Thank you.
You know, if anybody should excuse himself, it's this gentleman over there. Anyway, that's my, my only thing I have to say.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public wishing to speak? Sam?
Hello? Okay. So, my name is Sam Freeman. I live with my wife, Ann, directly across from the property in question at 951 Nielsen Street. I've lived there over 20 years, and I've watched a prior owner, and now the new owner, take possession of the property. I, as, living directly across the street, have a direct view of the property, and I just want to make it clear that I do not have an issue with what the present owner is doing. Present owner has, since they've moved in, developed the property, improved the property, and I think that, given the nature of the property, because I have a similar property on the other side of me, to my right, as I look out the front of my house, zero-lotline backyard, only property is space, that's in the front. Same thing with the property directly across the street from me. I see it as an improvement in the neighborhood to approve the curb appeal of that property. So I, as directly influenced across the street, have no issue with this property. To the other question of Councilman Barnes, who appeared to be visiting with the gentleman in question, no notice was given to any of the local property owners that Councilman Barnes would be present, nor did we have an opportunity to speak with him, although I was informed by another neighbor that Councilman Barnes was there, and had to approach him about the property in question. No questions were asked, although I was quite adamant about my feeling about the adjacent property. Councilman Barnes did not any, ask any questions, to my knowledge, of any adjacent neighbors, how they felt about it, and this is long before this prop, this was put on the agenda. So just to be clear, I'm quite surprised as well that Councilman Barnes has not said anything about this agenda item.
Thank you. Any other member of the public? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council.
At the discretion of everyone here, I'm happy to explain what council's role is in these type issues. When anyone in this town sends me an email with a concern about something, I just go look. I can, I can give you plenty of examples. There was a case when we were-
in question, no notice was given to any of the local property owners that Councilman Barnes would be present, nor did we have an opportunity to speak with him, although I was informed by another neighbor that Councilman Barnes was there and had to approach him about the property in question. No questions were asked, although I was quite adamant about my feeling about the adjacent property. Councilman Barnes did not ask any questions, to my knowledge, of any adjacent neighbors, how they felt about it, and this is long before this prop, this was put on the agenda. So just to be clear, I'm quite surprised as well that Councilman Barnes has not said anything about this agenda item.
Thank you. Any other member of the public? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council.
At the discretion of everyone here, I'm happy to explain what council's role is in these type issues. When anyone in this town sends me an email with a concern about something, I just go look. I can, I can give you plenty of examples. There was a case when we were redoing the sewer mains on Adams Street. We got a concerned email from a person who lived on that street, and on a rainy Sunday afternoon, there was four different council members out there looking at that project.
I believe that was Christmas Day.
Christmas Day, it was. I mean, more recently, two weeks ago, somebody sent me an email about a concern with those AAA go cars being parked inappropriately on our streets. I rode my bike over there, took some pictures, sent them to the transportation manager. As a rule, if some, there has been cases near the park where we changed the grade on the street, and both myself and Pete went over in our cars and drove back and forth on it about five or 10 times to, to see if it affected us. This is just what council members do. You try to be responsive to, you know, people who send you emails, whether you know them or not. Mr. Kane, I know, I know vaguely. I've seen him a couple of times riding back and forth to campus. When I worked on campus, he would be on his bicycle. Years ago, Albany Patch, remember Albany Patch? We would both comment on issues about radio frequencies and cell phones, but I've met Mr. Kane in person, other than, you know, those kind of casual encounters that you, you know, have with people in town. I don't know, once or twice it was. This is typical, and by the way, if I, in just driving around town, if I see projects that I look at and go, hmm, that's funny, has that been permitted? I will often call up the city and say, there's a project at blah, blah, blah street. Has that been permitted? So I see that as just my role as a council member, and I think all the other council members do the same thing. So there's nothing unusual about it.
Okay, thank you. Let's-
I have some questions.
Sure.
But I do want to support Councilmember Barnes's statements. I was also, I also went by the property briefly this past weekend because it was on the agenda, and I wanted to have a look for myself. It is not unusual. The applicant stated that the wall was below the height where a permit is permitted, is that correct?
So there are a couple of different measurements that are relevant to this situation. With respect to the city's planning code, there is a three-foot height limit on a fence. Planning code uses the word fence, and if you think of this wall in that sense, a three-foot height limit for a fence in the front yard. Measure that from the, in this case, the outside dimension, the, as, the grade as it appears from out, from the, from the street. With respect to the California Building Code, permits are required for any sort of retaining wall that are more than four feet from the bottom of the base to the, to the top. In this case, I would consider the top of the retaining wall, the top of the stucco part of the wall. I wouldn't count the, the wood frame as part of that structure. But the, from, from base to the top of the stucco is more than four feet, and that would be measured from the inside of, of the, of the property where it's deeper, the grade is deeper than it is on the outside of the wall.
So the answer is yes, a permit would be needed for such a structure?
Yes.
Okay. And-
Could I speak on that?
Could you wait till he's done with his questions, and I'll let you have another chance?
And what I understand from staff is that the, in addition, if the encroachment permit is finally granted, that there will also be a permit, a construction permit with double fees for the project, since the project was not done with permits?
That is, at, at staff discretion, we, we do have the authority that you've given through the master fee schedule to require applicants who proceed with starting work without permits. We use that at our discretion, depending on the circumstances, but if that, it would be a normal process that we do, yes.
Okay. That's it for questions.
Okay, did you want to answer that one question?
Yes.
Would you come up to the microphone, please?
Before I came here tonight, I measured from the inside, the highest point from the, from our ground level inside the yard to the top of the stucco was 45 inches, not 48. And from the outside, the stucco was like 28 to 24 on the sidewalk side, so it's below the three foot on the sidewalk side and below the 48 inches on the inside, not including the wood lattice, what's going to be for our vines. And we can remeasure it?
I'd be happy to go back there and remeasure. Again, it's from, from the bottom of the footing all the way to the top. It's not where the grade is.
From the bottom footing, okay.
From the bottom of the footing, so it probably, when I saw it under construction, I'm, I'm pretty sure it was more than four feet.
Yeah, I did, I did put a big footing there, yeah. And for Mr. Barnes, I mean, if, if, in the future, if there's, if you're a community person, wouldn't you want to get both sides? And if you were to talk to one person, next time, you can knock on my door and ask me questions if you have, if there's issues, if you heard one person's side.
Typically, what we do in a situation like that is, I just want to see the project. I just want to see if it looks, I don't, that's all. It helps, planning and zoning commissioners are pretty good at visualizing these things.
Just based on their description. But in these kind of cases, if people have problems, they can also, they can still look, that's all.
Yeah, it seems like you want to get both sides of the story if you're looking at a problem in the future.
It's not up to us now, it's up to planning and zoning.
Thank you. And I'll also say, I've been by several times to look at it. So I'd like to make a motion that we send this back to plan, or send this to planning and zoning to look at it under the context of the current regulations and past practices, and for them to, to take action on this particular item. And as part B of my motion, I'd like to direct planning and zoning to take the lead in drafting guidelines and permit processing procedures for permanent encroachment into the public right-of-way, and to include this in their 2019-20 work plan, also to include traffic and safety in that discussion, and also to include the city attorney. And I, that's, that's my motion. I anticipate traffic and safety would have a, a small, perhaps one-time review of, maybe through a subcommittee or something. I'm not anticipating it become a dual challenge, or that traffic and safety spend a whole lot of time on it, but that they weigh in.
Sorry, that they weigh in on which part?
On, the whole encroachment permit and how, when it impacts the public right-of-way.
I see.
I think traffic and safety does have a role in sidewalks or whatever it is.
Yeah.
But I don't want them to get-
Sure.
-too involved.
I will second that motion with added, well, just a statement that I, I think that putting, giving it back to planning and zoning, who routinely, as I know I've been on the commission, routinely reviews things like this, I think would be, is a great idea to get their input, so, as well as all the other things that the mayor said.
I'm sorry, what?
Count.
No, we're, we're done with the public. We're, we've made a motion, we're moving forward now.
Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Pilch?
Yes.
Mayor McQuaid?
Yes, and the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you all for coming. And I believe that finishes us up. Okay, other business announcements of events? Any future agenda items anybody has? Remember tomorrow's election day. Do be sure to vote. Our next council meeting will be Monday, November 19th, and with that, we are adjourned.